Councillor David G. Romero.
President.
Councillor Barbara Casey.
Here.
Councillor Vincent Howell.
Here.
Councillor David A. Ullivari Jr.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you very much. Pleasure.
Good girl. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councillor Howell.
Moment of silence. As Councillor Ullivari mentioned this in the earlier meeting, that we need to keep in mind all of our residents and all of our community members that are out there in the cold to find warmth. Please, Lord, keep them within your arms to make them warm. And put in our minds of all of our residents that are already warm to take a look at all of our community members that are not warm, that are cold out there. Be generous, be very concerned about them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
What is the pleasure, Lord?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Casey.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Lord, could you have a second?
Second.
Councillor, no, I'm sorry, I have a first motion by Councillor Casey and a second from David Ullivari. Councillor Romero?
Yes.
Councillor Casey?
Yes.
Councillor Howell?
Yes.
Councillor Ullivari Jr.?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Councillor Casey, a second by Councillor Ullivari. A motion does carry.
Thank you very much. Next item.
The next item on the agenda, and bear with us.
This is my first time, so.
We're learning. We're learning. The next item is the approval of minutes for September 10th, September 12th, which is a special meeting, September 12th work session and the September 19th regular session. Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for September 10th, the September 12th special meeting, the September 12th work session and the September 19th regular meeting, I'm sorry, work session and the September 19th meeting.
As amended?
As amended, and those corrections have been set.
Fine. Thank you very much.
Second.
Sorry, who's the second?
David.
Okay, Councillor Romero?
Yes.
Councillor Casey? Councillor Howell?
Yes.
Councillor Ullivari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councillor Casey and a second from Councillor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the councils and mayors' appointments and reports.
Thank you very much, I will be giving the report today. I want to discuss that I have been working diligently on getting some form of housing for, to assist the Samaritan House. We're not certain what the status of the future for Samaritan and homelessness is, so we have been, I have been working myself and Councillor Ullivari with the schools to see if we can, we're with the schools to get some form of housing for the homeless there. I also have had asked the commission, or the council, I'm sorry, to also get back to ask to put the status of what you've been doing. And I'm going to start with Councillor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I've done is I, my task was to meet with some ministers and churches throughout our community. And I have approached Pastor Seis, and he and I are going to be meeting on this subject and to see what he can do. And he's very influential in the rest of the churches, so we're going to try to get the other ministers and pastors together to discuss this issue, along with the Samaritan House.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ullivari.
I, I've been working with the churches too. I asked the father for some assistance and that they're, I'm, that they're going to get both of the churches together and see what they can do and help us with something. And that's about it, you know.
Okay, Councillor Casey.
I met with the Arlaya Saros Church Parish Council last Saturday and discussed the situation. Martha Lopez from the Samaritan House was there. She is a member of the council. And we discussed the need for finding shelter, temporary shelter until Samaritan House can renovate the shelter that they currently have or the new shelter that they purchased recently. And Arlaya Saros Church does not have any adequate space to provide shelter for the homeless, but they will be making generous donations to Samaritan House. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much, Councillor Casey. Councillor Romero?
I think we're all on the same page. I've been speaking, you know, with school board, individual school board members in, you know, facilities that they might have. And I understand you're attending one of the school board meetings tomorrow.
Yes, I'm going to report that.
Okay, so then, so other than that, I think, you know, continue to ask businesses to support Samaritan House and try to see if we could help, you know, maybe fund with, you know, some of the funds that they need to be in their building.
Okay, thank you. I will be speaking tomorrow evening at the City of Las Vegas Schools. I'm on the agenda as well as some of the staff who will be attending with me with regards to seeing what we can do to assist Samaritan Home in addition to what they've got going now. But I also would like to have Mr. Billy, the chief, come up here and please report as to the actual status of the permits and the requirements that are necessary to move the Samaritan Home forward and see what we can do to expedite this.
Most certainly. Madam Mayor, members of council, Ms. Manager, I've been working very diligently and very closely with the State Fire Marshal's Office as well as CID. We had a meeting this morning, did an inspection. We've also been working very closely with Mr. Lyons. We did an inspection, right now they are reporting back to the State Fire Marshal. He will make the decision with Mr. Gonzalez from CID in regards to allowing the Samaritan House to have a temporary CO. This kind of deviates from what the State Fire Marshal's Office usually does, but because of the conditions outside and the other building not being ready in time, they're trying to work together. So that best case scenario is we may get a 90-day. I was supposed to have an answer, but closed the business today. Since I didn't, they told me first thing in the morning, they'll let me know either way, but the answer isn't.
Okay.
Now, on a separate note, we're working on a backup plan, and I thank each and every one of you for reaching out to the community members as you have been doing. So I think it's essential that we need a backup plan, even if we get the 90 days for Samaritan House, just in case something were to happen at that location, we need a backup plan. So I'm open for any questions, any suggestions. One of the things that we had talked about was looking at different facilities throughout the community. So we're working on that very closely with the manager and hopefully we get a backup plan soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have a question?
I just, just, Madam Mayor, I know in discussion with you, we had also, you know, if we find those, those locations for the homeless during this, you know, during this cold weather in case whatever happens to Samaritan, but we had talked about transportation. Is that?
Yes, that's something that the city manager's going to be working with us as well. We haven't put the logistical plan together because we don't know exactly where they're going to be at, but we're doing all that we can. We're very active in the community and we're trying to do all we can to assist them. Councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief. Were you able to ask the folks you met with about the temporary fire suppression mechanism?
Yes, and they said as far as New Mexico Code, they never ever do that. So there wasn't, we weren't able to have a temporary, like you said, that they may do like Los Angeles or something like that. Their exact answer to me was that they don't do temporaries, period. However, they're trying to make an exception because of the cold weather. And CID and State Fire can come to one conclusion on it. The best result will be a 90-day temporary permit. After that, they're not going to get more than the 90 days. So essentially, that would take us probably into January. Still going to be cold. I still think we need a backup plan.
What about the fire watch idea?
Yes, that's one of the contingencies for allowing this 90-day is a fire watch going for seven.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last word.
A fire watch going for seven. As long as occupants are in the building, they're going to need an officer, a designated officer to go around the building. All the premises, do a fire watch on an hourly basis.
Officer meaning PD officer?
No, an officer meaning whoever they designate, whether it's Mr. Lyons, whether it's one of the board members or one of the staff members, they probably do a rotation on it. And as long as they keep a log, and let's say State Fire Marshal requests that log to make sure that they're complying with their regulations, they should be okay on that, on that aspect.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have just a clue.
Councillor Casey.
Madam Mayor, Councillor Howell and I attended the meeting of the Samaritan House last night. And we were very surprised when people showed up with flyers that were discussing the possibility of Legion Park School becoming the temporary shelter. And we were surprised because we did not know that you were doing this. And so.
I told you, yes, I did. I informed your executive.
We didn't, we didn't know that you were going to be on the agenda for the school board meeting. And so we were not able to answer any questions that people had. City manager did a very good job of addressing the issues that were brought up. But I would just.
When I'm not available, then she steps in.
But I would like to request that in the future, if you're going to be doing a presentation, that you let us know so that, you know, we are better apprised as to what's going on.
Well, the city manager was present, the city manager knew. And I don't believe that I have to report to you everywhere that I go because I'm all over the place. But thank you very much.
The reason that I would request that is because I was told by one of the school board members from Las Vegas City Schools that in your discussion with Superintendent Cooper, that you had also said that we would be providing temporary, sorry, portable showers and other necessities for the shelter if it's approved, if it's approved tomorrow night. So that would be an expenditure that would have to come before the council.
No, not necessarily, that's an administrative function.
If it's more than $60,000.
I know, it would be more than that, no. I don't, I don't recommend that it would be more than that at all.
And, and, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if, let's say, we get a temporary, a temporary waiver for a 30 or a 60 or 90 day, this is going to give us some time to work out issues that we all have as far as payment, as far as the build, use of the building, who is going to be, who is going to be facilitating the building, who is going to be checking on the building. So this is going to give us some time and we, we've worked on this quite a bit. We worked on it all day, actually. And we're hoping that we do get possibly a 30 to 60-day waiver so that we can work out these type of mechanics on these type of issues that, that we have. Because they, we have to do possibly an MOU. We might have to do some kind of an agreement. There's a lot of things that, that are being worked on and I know that Ms. Gardner was looking at that as well.
One last thing is, Mr. Lyons was the director of the Samaritan House and the board members had no idea that you were going to be doing that either. So they were very surprised and people were questioning them about the Legion Park thing and about the meeting at Las Vegas City Schools, which kind of threw everybody for a loop. So.
We, we had talked to.
We did speak, if I may. We had a meeting with Mr. Lyons on Friday. And he's actually the one who requested that if we were going to possibly shut them down at the 1,000 Mills Avenue address, that he, he was hoping that the City of Las Vegas would step in to assist him. And, and that's the reason why we've been doing this. We've been looking for other locations. We haven't shared every location that we have with him. But this was one of the reasons why we went out. We didn't want to shut them down and then leave everybody out in the cold. We wanted to make sure that we had some facility for them, whether it be a school, whether it be a house or anything that we could get a hold of to shelter these people because it is cold. And I, I, I worked and I, we've worked and worked on this. Billy has worked on this daily. And so he was, he was actually the person who requested that we assist them. And I guess we didn't share every facility because we just don't know, it's up still up in the air.
But he was concerned about, I think.
I think he was.
Because he didn't know how to respond to the people in the audience because he didn't know that the mayor would be doing a presentation before the school board. That was the issue, not the issue that you're helping. Just that they were not informed that that was what was going to happen.
And he, he does still believe that.
But, but he was aware that I was going to.
But we, we do want to help them in whatever way it is we want to help.
And so was the council aware of their duty and directive during our discussion with the executive. Councillor Romero.
And Madam Mayor, I think what's, what's happened here is that, I think there seems to be a perception from the public is that we, the city has completely taken over, you know, the, the homeless shelter, you know, the shelter itself versus working with, with the Samaritan House. And I think, you know, we're here to support them. We can't just jump into, you know, this is a temporary solution to help them out meanwhile, till they get their, their shelter up and going. And I think there's a miscommunication out there that that's going to be the permanent, you know, homeless shelter. And I think that's where, that's where there's some frustration within the community.
And the discussion tomorrow will include that, that it's only a temporary. We don't even know if we're going to be able to use this because we don't know what's going to happen.
And, and I think that's, you know, I did, I did message Ms. Geigels because that's sort of the impression that I got is that we were taking over and then, and then like Councillor Casey said earlier is, you know, when Samaritan House wasn't aware and I was like, oh, it's, thought we were working with them, not trying to, you know, direct competition. But, you know, I think we're in this together, we're here to help them out.
Most definitely.
And, you know, this is temporary for now just because, you know, we've hit the cold weather and we want to make sure our residents are warm.
Exactly. And that's already been clearly stated in executive and that's going to be stated again tomorrow and I've stated that publicly already.
We'll just, we'll continue to work with them.
Just, just a comment in regards to what Councillor Casey mentioned. I think the point that I understood Councillor Casey saying is that we, as a governing body, needs to know what is happening out there in the community. When, when a community member asks us a question about a certain thing that they heard, then we, we have to say, I didn't know about that. And, and we're not trying to micromanage your personal agenda.
No, you can't.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Absolutely.
Yes, you are the spokesperson, but you also have a governing body here that needs to know what you're doing because of the fact that we're out there.
You knew because we discussed it in executive one.
We didn't know that you were.
And we also discussed it with Mr. Lyons.
We did not know about the, the school board agenda.
Yes, you did. I even told you in executive that I was going to call him and meet with him.
Yes, but we did not know that you had.
And I told you I was going to get on the agenda. I made that statement.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make that comment that we need to know.
Comment noted, thank you very much. Councillor Ullivari.
I have a comment. It's, I'm very happy that you're going to put a person out there. Because we need to, we need to go out there and hear the public or make a voice for the public that what's going on, that you're trying to do. It's very good that you're doing that, you know. We're happy for you to do that. And I'm pretty sure that there's going to be other citizens or schools that are going to call you to do that, you know. And, and you should go and do what's called.
Thank you, I appreciate that support. Councillor Ullivari? Okay, let's continue. Thank you. Chief, I appreciate all the work you're doing. And Ms. Geigels?
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the Mayor's recognition proclamations.
I have none of this.
The next item on the agenda is public input. The first one is Mr. Michael Lopez regarding the police department. Good evening, Mr. Lopez. How are you?
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Lopez. I'm a lieutenant with the Las Vegas Police Department and president of the Las Vegas Police Officers Association. I come here on behalf of the union and its members. For the past nine months, the police department has not had a permanent chief. This is a huge problem and his service to the department and the community for which it serves. During these nine months, our command staff have been depleted to include the retirements of Chief Juan, Chief Juan Matana, Commander Juan Gonzalez and Commander Christopher Lopez leaving to explore other career options. None of these positions have been filled in this time. This causes a huge breakdown in the way we operate. With the, without the appointment of a permanent chief, the promotional process for this department is at a standstill. Important positions cannot be filled, thus hindering further operations. Police departments need structures and a chain of command. Without this structure, things have the potential to fall by the wayside. While the current, while the current command is doing an admirable job of keeping operations going, it is of the utmost importance that a chief is appointed sooner rather than later. We have a young department that requires leadership and direction. Without a permanent chief, we cannot move forward in building the kind of department this community needs and deserves. I ask that you please take this into consideration and finally put this to rest so we can continue to build this department for the future. With this in mind, I am not speaking on my own behalf and not the membership of the union. During these nine months, I have wondered, why has it, why has it been so difficult to select a chief? I have been asked many times why Deputy Chief Jenkins has not been afforded the opportunity to lead this department. Deputy Chief Jenkins has administrative knowledge and is perfectly capable, capable of leading this department. He has the respect of the men and women he works with and has proven to be a loyal employee, being here almost 20 years. Deputy Chief Jenkins has proven that he has the best of intentions for this department and is more than willing to take on the challenge of the building and moving this department forward. Deputy Chief Jenkins knows the problems that this department faces and has the plans and vision to fix these problems. And with this, I thank you for your time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. The next person on the, on the public input is Mr. Jim Turp. And he is regard, and he will speak regarding police department as well.
What was it regarding, I'm sorry?
Police department.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yes. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I was made aware today that there might be some discussion of selection of a new police chief. And I simply wanted to say, based on a couple of personal encounters, not a lot of big involvements or business encounters, that Deputy Chief Jenkins seems to me a fine person, good officer, alert, sharp, open, responsive. And between that and the fact that it might be positive for morale to have somebody appointed from within the department, I just wanted to make that suggestion as a citizen. And number two, if I have time, may I say something else?
Absolutely.
It's my first time in a long time at one of these meetings. My hearing is almost normal, but I want to report that from back there, the city manager was sitting there a while ago and Councilman Howell are the only people I can hear. So it might be worthwhile looking at upping the volumes on other people.
I think it was the heater, because we couldn't even hear back here.
I'm sorry, you, did you say you could not hear me?
No, we couldn't actually hear very much here because the heater was going, so it was really hard for us to listen.
Yeah, I think the whole thing could go off a bit.
Yeah.
And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turp. The next person on the list is Darren Romero, police. Good evening, Mr. Romero.
Good evening. Is this meeting not being televised tonight?
No, it is not.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
It's being recorded.
Okay. Council members, I'm here just to speak on behalf of public safety. My perspective specifically is the police department. I've been with the department for about a year and a half, two and a half years. Been in law enforcement, going on five years. And it's a bit troubling these days. We have officers that are applying to fast food restaurants for the second job. You know, we have some that are working maintenance, you know, to put food on the table. And you couple that with the department being in limbo, you know, having no head, no visible direction. But we still have a direction. We get our job done, we go to calls. Las Vegas is about 13,000 in population. Okay, but that's people that live here. There's an influx of people from the neighboring communities, the outskirts. Any given day, there's, I want to estimate almost 20,000 people that come in and out of Las Vegas. Okay? And to have a police department that's worried about, you know, how am I going to put food on the table? And at any given moment, there's about four officers on the street. Okay? Dealing with traffic accidents, to, you know, burglaries, to, you know, you name it. There's, we deal with a lot of stuff. And to have no figurehead, no one to kind of guide us other than, you know, our fine command staff who right now is struggling, you know, because there's, they're thin. There's not very many of them right now. You know, we have interim everything. We have positions that need to be filled, rank that needs to move up so we can hire new officers to put more on the streets, to protect our fine community. And it's, it's really troubling to see that we can't put our political differences, our personal differences aside, you know, to come together, you know, pick someone to lead our fine department. You know, we're, we're small, we're a poor community, but I'm a proud member of this community and I have no intention of going anywhere. And it's, it's really troubling when you see officers, you know, say, I, I can't do it. I'm, I'm going to apply to APD, I'm going to apply to state police, I'm going to apply to Santa Fe County, Santa Fe, you know, city. You know, we, we can't retain officers. And to have a department that's kind of in disarray because we don't have a chief, you know, we don't have commanders that are actually set in that position, it's, it's, you know, it's troubling. It's the best word I can say for it, you know. But I hope, you know, we can come together, listen to the community, listen to, you know, business members. Ask them, you know, who they think might be, who they've dealt with as far as command staff, as far as who they think might lead this police department, you know, to, you know, better our community, better public safety in general, which is in a little disreparate in this town. Thank you.
For the record, I'd like to state that, yes, I am moving quickly. I'm bringing a chief.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. The next person is Ms. Darlene Baca regarding code enforcement. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, how are you? I'm actually here on a different matter, you know, I do work with the department for a new chief. I'm here actually because I have a concern. I reside between, oh, at 600 Friedman Avenue, across the street between 1307 Sixth Street and 600 Friedman. I'm trying to currently be a good neighbor to Mr. Bob Dalton. I know that everyone's aware of the situation that's going on there. I do want to thank the city manager as well as recognize Mr. Howell. I did, you know, visit with him periodically. A couple of weeks ago, you know, I got up to go to work and I, actually, I was in tears when I spoke to Mr. Howell. Recently, Mr. Dalton has continued to accumulate what I would call maybe his treasure, but it, it's not. It appears to me that he's running some sort of a little business from there in the office of, you know, that it is a yard sale. Recently, now there are couches in the front that are right across on the sidewalk from time to time. There are, I would say, people that are maybe not so reputable in that area, living out of a van from time to time, plugging into that house. My concern is that, you know, I have talked to other people within my area, you know, I'm concerned about rodents and just, you know, infestation of, you know, cockroaches, et cetera, coming onto my property. Now, Mr. Dalton and I, you know, we do speak, we are on speaking terms, you know, I think he's a very nice gentleman. However, I'm here just to let you know that I have a concern as a homeowner, you know, that this shouldn't be happening. I'm concerned that if something isn't done, it's going to continue to happen. I have spoken with code enforcement, I think Levi has kept me abreast of what's going on. I'm only asking the council to please take a look at that area again before it becomes, you know, gets out of control. I am under the understanding that, you know, they have visited with him, they have served him with documents, you know, he is aware, but this area just continues to grow leaps and bounds. I mean, people are now dropping off furniture, people are dropping off clothing, he puts a sign out there, you know, he has things for sale. I don't even think he's licensed to do that. So I'm asking, you know, Madam Mayor and Council, to please take a look at that and to do something if it gets out of control. I also believe with what he's accumulating, it could be a potential fire hazard. So that's all I have to say, I'm asking, you know, for that to be looked at.
Thank you very much. And actually, I was notified slightly over three months ago. I notified the city manager, she notified the code enforcement officer. We have been working on this for a while now, and our code enforcement officer is doing a job, and he's outstanding, and that's duly noted throughout his career here. We're fully aware of this, the city's fully aware of this, the council's fully aware of this. This evening, we have an item on the agenda, which is a consent agenda item, and I believe we'll not have a problem passing this consent unless one of the council members decides to pull it out, but I don't see that happening with regards to the enforcement of that specific property, and hopefully we can move forward to the meeting.
Well, thank you, and I think you.
We're doing all we can, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baca. The next person is Mr. Wilbert Ryan, police chief selection.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember. Please excuse me if I sit at President's stand. My name is Wilbert Ryan. I've been a member of our community for approximately eight years. I've talked to you a couple of times before concerning police. I'm a cop lover, and that will become obvious, I think. As you may recall, I'm a retired New Mexico State employee. I have about 40 years of experience in human resources and personnel administration. I was a human resource for the New Mexico Department of Public Safety, which most people still call state police, for approximately 15 years. I'd like to visit with you or express to you what I think we need in a police chief. There's some qualities that I've seen state police enforce and follow in hiring somebody, and I'd like to talk a little bit about those qualities. Number one, honesty and integrity. Open-minded and accessible. The police chief is a liaison to the public and the community in public meetings. Members of the public and the community should feel comfortable in approaching a chief with issues concerning public safety. A chief should have commitment to diversity. A police chief should display a solid record of treating racial, ethnic, and social, economic differences with fairness. A police chief should be a proven leader. It is important that candidates for the chief of police develop alternatives, solve problems, and manage employees effectively. A police chief should lead a force of officers by example, by not being only a responsible member of law enforcement, but an available and respected person in the community. I think a chief should be someone who currently lives in the city, someone who has appreciation of what the city of Las Vegas is about, and someone who is respected by his fellow officers in the department. Someone who is capable of immediately hitting the ground and starting to solve any existing I strongly encourage the mayor and the council to fill the current opening with a current police officer in Las Vegas. And in particular, speaking for myself, I would like to see Deputy Chief Ken Jenkins appointed as chief of police. I feel his work product has demonstrated the needed qualities of the position. My interaction with Deputy Chief Jenkins has been somewhat limited, but I have found him to be very knowledgeable and certainly an asset to the community in both his professional and private life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. That concludes our public input for this evening. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is presentations by Mr. Bob Mishler, Las Vegas Community Foundation.
Hi, how are you doing?
Hi, Madam Mayor. I'm here on behalf of Bob Mishler, who's in the audience.
I was looking for Bob Mishler. I was looking for Bob Mishler.
Elmo will speak for him.
Exactly, that's great, thank you, Dr. Mishler.
If I might just take a minute or two, I have some handouts for the staff and the audience.
Absolutely. Could you pass those to the.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't know the protocol. I think there's four.
Three and.
Anytime. City councillors, city staff, from Las Vegas. Good evening, my name is Elmo Baca, I'm a local businessman, and I'm here to make an exciting announcement for our community. On behalf of the new Las Vegas, New Mexico Community Foundation, we are grateful for your time and this opportunity to inform you about the Las Vegas, New Mexico Community Foundation. The handouts will give you more detailed information about our organization, but I just want to add some personal insights. A dedicated group of volunteers started meeting almost two years ago because we felt a need in our community. We felt the need to offer a way for people, businesses, institutions, and other foundations to give back to Las Vegas. And so we began working on organizing a nonprofit charitable community foundation. Last year's work was dedicated to drafting our bylaws and obtaining our nonprofit status from the Internal Revenue Service, which is nitty-gritty work that nobody really likes to do, but it enabled us to begin working on the exciting work of raising money and resources to give back to Las Vegas. We were granted our nonprofit status last November, and we next started considering how we were going to staff our group and manage funds that would be donated to us. After much consideration, we have partnered with the Santa Fe Community Foundation, which is a 40-year-old organization and has assets of about $80 million. The Santa Fe Community Foundation will help us invest our funds in our donors' funds wisely and also help us grow an endowment. The Santa Fe Community Foundation has already invested money into our foundation and also in local community projects. I think you're all aware of the Castaneda Hotel rehabilitation project underway now, and they have already invested a sizable amount to that project. We feel that together with the Santa Fe Community Foundation and other New Mexico foundations, we can bring some exciting new collaborations and resources that will benefit Las Vegas, our region, and northern New Mexico. Our vision, goal, and mission is simple: help Las Vegas thrive. That's what we're all about. This year, we have already raised a modest amount, I can tell you it's about five figures, and we intend to give it back as soon as we can. Hopefully, we'll be making our first grants to qualify local nonprofit organizations by the end of the year. Finally, before I introduce board members that are here, I just want to say a few words about our hopes for a fruitful and dynamic partnership with the city of Las Vegas. The Las Vegas, New Mexico Community Foundation wishes to be a valuable resource to the city of Las Vegas in helping to address some of our community's most pressing challenges. We see our role as one of attracting and organizing resources, funds, technical assistance, and other partners to help Las Vegas thrive. So we are now ready, willing, and excited to work with the city to serve our community, its residents, and our region. So I want to just mention our board members, we've worked hard to make this happen. Our chair is Bob Mishler. And other board members are Felix Alderete, Tom Clayton, Doyle Daves, Jennifer Sanchez, Bill Taylor, and Max Trujillo. We also have an advisory and development committee that will have its first meeting next week, and we're hoping that this distinguished committee will help us raise money in this final quarter of the year and for years to come. We also have our administrative coordinator, Andy Andrew. So if it pleases the council, we will stand for questions if you'd like to.
I have some questions. First of all, this is a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
Okay, will you be coming to the city with a proposal for funding?
Not immediately, we're raising our funds from private sources.
Okay, good. Being that the city is partnershiped to the community foundation, I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint someone either possibly from the council or possibly from the staff on the advisory committee, if that is okay?
We would appreciate that, yes.
Okay, I'll get together, if it's going to be a councillor, I'd like to appoint councillor Howell, because he's very active if he has the time. If not, then we can look at a councillor, a member of the council, a councilor, a member. But if not, then we can also appoint somebody within the staff, and being that it's community development, I would probably suggest that somebody from community development be serving on that advisory committee, at least one member from the city.
That would be great, I think we would probably welcome a councillor and a staff member.
Okay, good, I like that.
I'd also like to mention that our first organizational meeting of the advisory development group is going to be next Wednesday, the 22nd. So that would be a perfect time for somebody to come.
What time is that? Would you accept councillor Howell?
I believe that is.
Just one question, your bylaws don't specifically, I mean, if they're not in the bylaws yet, then we shouldn't be jumping the gun yet?
Do you have the bylaws? Well, they can appoint advisory committee members, that's not a problem.
Our bylaws allow for flexible members.
Exactly, so would you accept councillor Howell?
Sure.
Okay, and Ms. Dago, could you check on that other appointment and then get back to Elmo, and then also send a message to the council as to who you feel you want to select for that? Thank you very much. And if you need us and you do come back to us with a viable proposal, we will definitely look at that for funding in the future.
We welcome that invitation.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Elmo. I know you, I know your work, and your board members are so dynamic, I have tremendous respect for one of my teachers, of course, Dr. Mishler, who is such an honest, good, decent man, so congratulations, Dr. Mishler, congratulations to the community foundation, we wish you best.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. That concludes our presentations, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item is city manager's report. Several employees from the city of Las Vegas attended the Office of Emergency Management training on Thursday, October 11th. Councillor Howell and Councillor Casey also attended, and quite an eye-opener and a very educational day for us. We spent approximately seven hours, I believe, at New Mexico Highlands University. Several of the staff members also attended from the police department, from the fire department, and I believe there was others that I don't recall. There'll be, what I understand is that there will be one more training that'll be attended by department heads and then, of course, council if they so desire. Then we're going to have a mock event on behalf of the city and the county, is my understanding. This is really training that we need to do on an annual basis, especially for emergency issues. The training was hosted by the Office of Emergency Management. We're looking at doing presentations from all the departments to mayor and council, so that each one of them can identify their roles as a department and, of course, as, if any, kind of an emergency happens, and what we need to do and how we need to proceed. And so the training and the mock event will assist us in that, and so we are going to be moving forward with this subject matter. On another note, we're close to finalizing the Sickle Bank policy, which is mandatory on behalf of the city of Las Vegas, we'll be bringing that to mayor and council as well for your review. The code enforcement division has close to 45 open cases, and so we're working with code enforcement to see how we can assist them as well, and see how quickly we can get on addressing some of those 45 cases. The elevator located at the library is in operation, they have, the company has come in, has repaired the elevator, and we're good to go, of what I understand. Our phone system is scheduled to be installed and tested in the early part of November, and so we are going to probably be having some training as well, and we will let mayor and council know about that as well. Job descriptions continue to be reviewed by Organics, the company that is doing our job descriptions. Once finalized, we'll bring a report back to mayor and council for your review as well. There may be some updates or some other issues that you may want us to take a look at. The fire department is looking into a carbon monoxide program. We may be able to acquire some detectors for carbon monoxide detection, and so we're going to be looking at that, especially now with the cold winter months. Hughes is going to be looking at those carbon monoxide detectors and see how we can best distribute them. Filming continues, and the filming industry has contacted Ms. Virginia Maruho quite a few times, we're still continuing to do the filming around the plaza and around the Las Vegas area, and that'll continue as we move forward. It seems as though they are using more and more of our areas, and so that is good for the economy as well as for our department and city of Las Vegas. We're continuing to work on a date for a review of the utility rate assessment, we need to work on that date. We're having a little bit of a difficult time trying to identify a date that the city is able to meet, as well as the third party that we need to meet with. Utilities will be bringing presentations to mayor and council, this will include the discussion regarding the utility rate assessment and Peterson Dam. We're also continuing to work on our franchise agreements, one of them is with Clear Sight Cable, as well to bring back the board meetings on the air. An asset management plan for city roads. An asset management plan for city roads is being worked on as well, and we're also looking at funding for the comprehensive master plan, and these two are requirements for the, to seek federal and state funds for streets and other local areas. The water slide for the recreation department has been ordered, and the company is working with staff on installation of the water slide. We decided to do it during the winter months so that we wouldn't hinder the summer months and the summer programs that we currently have. Stand for any questions.
Questions, comments? Councillor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Daigle, can you give us an update on the solid waste issue that happened recently?
There was, there was an accident that happened at the solid waste, and I am going to let Maria Gilberry give us a, she can give you a few more details than what I can. Ms. Gilberry?
Mayor, councilor's manager. Councillor Howell, we did have a situation with one of our drivers pushing trash on the floor up to our semis, which it pushed over a metal beam, and he had the vehicle, the front of the trackhoe at the wrong angle, so it ended up catching that lip and lifting up that metal bar. We went through the procurement process, we got three quotes, and I got appealed this afternoon, so Daigle will be showing up tomorrow with me to start work on repairing that. We'll get that repaired by closing, should be repaired by closing business.
Did we get trash pickup today?
Staff have found an alternative. They're trying to keep up with it. They're a little bit behind schedule. We had the individual packer trucks actually taking trash to wagon bound, so it's, we're a little bit behind schedule. That way, we can empty the packer trucks, come back, and continue to try and pick up trash. They still have been picking up trash. They're staying extra hours. And they're also working on alternatives. They're using the old pit to be able to put a trailer in and also offload some of the trash. So they're adjusting. My staff have come up with about two or three awesome ideas that allow them to continue picking up trash, but it is going to be a little bit hard.
So this situation was not considered as an emergency?
It was, but we still follow procurement. It would be, and we still need to follow procurement, and we still need to follow the posting of the emergency. And so this afternoon, we received the incident report, and we also received the quotes.
We did get three quotes, and so we were able to move forward with the lowest data on the three quotes.
Don't we already have a precedent set in regards to emergency, in regards to the water cooler incident?
I believe, I believe that that's why we are a little bit more stringent with our, with our quotes. We do try, because, and it was under the $60,000, so this one was, came close to $4,000.
$4,000 and $4,000 is going to be the cost of moving the repair.
But we're still, yes, but we're still requiring three quotes.
And that was a recommendation on the audit?
Yes.
Okay.
But I did want to give huge goodos to staff because they got together and they came up with two or three different wonderful alternatives. To go a little old school, it was an old pit that they used, and they were able to pull the semi into it. So they've come up with some really creative ideas to try and minimize the impact of the community, but apologize to the community, it still is an impact, but my staff will work all weekend long if necessary to catch up.
One last thing, Ms. Daigle. Do we have any ordinances or resolutions stating what can happen during an emergency in regards to getting it fixed?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's part of the purchasing, that's part of the procurement.
Right. And did it not state that we can get it fixed right away without getting three bids?
We actually fixed it right away. They were cautious enough to get three bids, and we also were looking for someone who could come in immediately, and they were able to come in. I believe it was Dag?
He'll be in tomorrow if this is, if we've not had it fixed yet.
The reason why, the reason why I'm asking is because the mayor said that it was part of the audit finding. So do we need to change our emergency action plan?
I think we operate as a state statute, correct?
It's a state statute, yes. And we do operate it. But I will take a look at it with the question.
I'm just saying that if we, if it's, if it's a finding, then we need to change what we have in the emergency action plan.
Was it actual finding? I think it was just a recommendation.
It was a recommendation, but I'll, I'll take a look at it. I don't have it in front of me, but I will take a look at it and see if we can do something, something different. But it was, we did actually work on it immediately. It was pretty, it was, it was actually a team effort by Maria's staff and our staff as well to get this going.
Thank you very much.
Yes. So we did get it going as quickly as we could.
Okay.
Ms. Daigle, Maria, is the employee that was using the trackhoe, does he, does he experience with that trackhoe or?
He does have a little bit of experience, basically, he's UI, he's under instruction right now. He did learn how to come at it with the teeth, with the front down. He's going to, he learned how to approach it properly, but that is a young man who's under instruction and we're working with him.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Continue.
The next item on the agenda is the finance report. Ms. Tana Vega and Darlene Martinez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to present the revenue and expenditure reports for the month ended September 30th, 2018. Twenty-five percent of the year has left. On the general fund, we had total actual expenditures of $2,655,192. That's 23% of our budgeted revenues. GRT taxes are coming in right around 27% of budgeted revenues. What's brought down that 23% is property tax budget, which we will not be collecting actual property taxes until November and December. Total expenditures for the general fund, $2,586,972. 20% of the budgeted expenditures have been extended. Recreation center. Actual revenues collected, $138,332, 14% of budgeted revenues. 19% of the budget has been expended. Our enterprise funds. Revenues reported on the accrual basis, $3,532,850. 21% of budgeted revenues have been built, and expenditures are at $3,102,472, and 20% of the budget has been extended. Any questions?
Questions, comments? On the figure, we're aligned with the actual drawdowns, correct? Or is it 19%, I mean, is it 19%?
Yes.
Okay. Let me confirm. Okay, thank you. No other questions?
In my interview, in my interview with the HUD officials, you know, they asked some questions, you know, financial reports and stuff like that, and just had me thinking. I know we have a finance committee within the city. Are they showing, are they showing the expenditures, bank reconciliations? I know as a council, we're not, so I'm just, you know, I just know my experiences.
No, they show them the actual budget. I used to sit, before I was a councillor, on the finance committee, and what they do is they give us pretty much a report of this nature, and then, I mean, that's my understanding when I used to serve on the committee. And then when I was a councillor, I was appointed to the finance committee, but I chose to remove myself from any of the committees at that point in time because of the fact that there's a checks and balances issue, and we were bringing it, the questions to the city, and there's a conflict of interest, I found out, that you cannot be sitting on a committee making recommendations because you are actually providing testimony. So then I would vote on it. So there was a huge conflict of interest, so I removed myself from the committee. But yeah, what they normally do is provide something similar to this, and if they have questions, and at that point in time, Tana would address those or the finance director at that moment.
And I just, the reason why I ask is, is it just something that the council has never requested or?
Well, I served on the, I served on the West Las Vegas School Board Finance Committee, and I believe Emery served on Hichon Robertson as well, and they've never provided in-depth detail of the reporting standards.
But I mean, that's.
As a, I guess what I'm asking as a council, can we, I mean, and maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but I think, you know, detailed, I don't know if the software program that we use is, is that something that can be printed out or given a report to, you know?
We can. We can work on a, on a board report for you and so that you are, you can look at all of the expenditures, it's, it's a lengthy report.
Yeah. And it, you know, most of the time it's digital, you know, because we don't want to print out the pages, but just digital.
We can certainly.
One of the things that I saw historically, and Emery will agree with me on this, I'm sure, and Tana, is that our biggest shortfall was always the reconciliations. And within the time that I have been here in the last 12 years or so, I have noticed that the reconciliations, I would say, within the last three years, I must say, two and a half, three years that I've been here, have been almost perfect. You know, as a matter of fact, I believe that you were asked the questions during the audit that were, that they were commended about, you know, the HUD audit.
Which audit, the one that's now?
No, the HUD audit, yeah, the one that's ongoing now. But the reason, they were pretty shocked with the fact that the reconciliations are correct.
Correct.
And what I got from that, and you know, just my experience as a school board member is we did get that information. Mr. Witters is here, and he could vouch, you know, that we did get, you know, those reports, and I'm just wondering, that's something that I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have and see.
We have quite a few.
It just, it made me think that.
I never got them, when I, but not as a board member. I was on the finance committee, so when I sat there, I never.
I know the expenditures, for sure, are shared with the finance committee.
Expenditures, and we can certainly provide you.
We have, we have discussed the possibility of providing them if requested. Usually, it's a common practice that expenditures do not get authorized until the council, a mayor and council review them and approve them, or county commissioners. However, we do have a tremendous amount of monthly, and we do process AP accounts payable on a weekly basis versus a monthly, so.
And I just know the software program, but you know, the.
No, we can provide, if you are requesting a detailed expenditure.
So you're talking specifically expenditures.
Expenditures.
And there's, I believe there's a report called a board, board expenditure report, and we'll print that out, see if you.
Board expense approval.
Email is, email is, well, that's, no.
And we'll, we'll email it to everyone.
In my councillor's report, I mean, I'll go, email.
Okay. We can do that. And then we can also send you, we can also show you the reconcili, we can also give you some type of reconciliations, although I think we have, how many reconciliations? We have quite a few, but we can certainly share them.
We have 32 to 40 reconciliations that we have to perform on a monthly basis.
Is that on the board? Thank you. Councillor Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Howell, Ramiro, for requesting that. I think that's a very good idea. My question is on the recreation department. The expenditures are 5% more than the revenues. Can you guide me as to why that is the way it is? Are we, I mean, we're having less use of the rec center or where is that 5% difference coming from?
A 5% difference would be in the salaries.
In the salaries?
Yes.
So does that mean that we've hired more personnel there?
Additional staff needed to be, being that we provide a summer program for working parents, and additional, and she had, what, 49?
I believe she had close to.
Forty-nine to 50 youngsters, and I think law, the law only requires a five to.
There's a ratio, right.
To adult. So there's that ratio, and additional staff had to be put on in order to address.
Okay, so it was basically because of the summer program.
It was basically because of the summer program.
I thought it might be it, but I just wanted to confirm.
The next, that's actually a discounted rate, I believe, councillor, that we give parents.
Yes.
For some people, and then we give another discount if there's two or three members in the, in the group.
Okay. And just one quick question, it's kind of a weird question, but doesn't have anything to do with expenditures or anything like that, but on the enterprise fund page, at the top of the page, on my page, it has a red SD mark. What does that mean? Who knows?
Oops, oops.
It was red, I thought.
I wonder what it means.
That's all I can say. Oops. Standard deviation, giving them the Excel program. Yes.
I'm going to find out what that SD stands for.
You'll have to send me a text.
I will, I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Daigle, Ms. Vega, and?
Martinez.
Ms. Martinez, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't. Can you give us a update on how our gross receipts taxes are in regards to increase or decrease and the reasons why?
They've actually increased, and I can't give you a solid answer as to why. There has been quite a bit of construction in the area, and that's brought in the additional revenues. The roof workers were still performing jobs in the hail vehicles that were being repaired, and they all were required to pay gross receipts taxes within, within the city. If they conducted business in the city, they were required to collect and pay the GRT taxes.
What about, like, loves and roofies?
Those just.
Are they one of the reasons?
I've seen a slight increase in the gasoline taxes that are being collected, which are not reflected on this report because those are reported in the street improvement fund, and there has been a slight increase also there, a 2% to 3% increase.
Do they pay regular gross receipts tax also, correct?
No.
They don't have a convenience store?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. They would be paying GRT taxes on those ones, and then any fuel sales are under the gasoline taxes.
Right, I understand that. Thank you. What about lodgers' tax?
Oh, we've seen a slight increase, and that's also because of the construction industry that, you know, the, they're staying here in our motels. I've noticed now with the South Grand, construction ongoing, the motels are, have more visitors to them.
I see. Do you know if the movie industries are crew and stars are staying in our hotels?
Additionally, not only depending, if the film crew is pretty big, they bring their own RVs, and some will stay, like, at the plaza or, you know, depending on your status, I mean, you know, but, but a lot of them will bring their own RVs, so that's kind of difficult to gauge.
Are the restaurants seeing a lot of increases?
I don't know by industry. I haven't taken a look to see where the increases are, but I have noted an increase in the projected revenues that are being collected.
Thank you. I think, I think a good update for us as a governing body would be good for us to have these type of information on either a quarterly basis or a monthly basis, because I would like to know how we are doing gross receipts tax and lodgers' tax, because those are the big revenues dollars that we're getting, so.
They are. They are the big, the bigger chunks. What we can do is bring you the revenue reports that'll show the lodgers' tax. What we can do is bring you the revenue reports that'll show the lodgers' tax, and then we can also show, I think it's only, and it's, we should have received 25% of our grocery receipts right now. We're at 27%. It's, it's not that big of an increment, but at least we're staying with the projection that we had anticipated. And so, but I can, we can bring a report, and it's, it's, it's detailed, and it'll tell you what lodgers brings in, what retail, and what construction brings in, I believe, and it's very detailed, so we can, we can bring one in too.
And, and those reports are also available on the Tax and Rev website. And as to the breakdowns, and they're by industry, right?
Yes.
Yes.
My last question is, I know that President Trump has really focused on the increasing tariffs. How is that affecting our city in regards to any increases that we're seeing in purchasing products?
Yes.
We heard, we heard George Lyons last night, I don't know if you caught his, what his remark was, that if people can go to Albuquerque and buy, it seems like double what they can buy here, and so there, it seems like there, that might be an issue, because of course the, especially the grocery stores need to charge more, because we're smaller. And, and so he says, he seemed to think that that dollar didn't go as far, and I don't know if you caught the, if you caught the discussion from him, but it kind of makes you think about these things a little bit.
I'm more concerned about the, the purchasing department, our purchasing department. Have they seen, you know, because I know they, they buy a lot of items, but are they seeing increases on, on those items that they've been buying in the past?
Our purchasing office, no. However, I have noticed some of the departments, utilities, and the fire department being too specifically, where the invoices say that after a certain date, the prices will be higher because of imposed tariffs.
Right. Do you want to yield a word? I just wanted to say that the steel tariffs are the ones that are affecting most, because roofers have to raise their prices, I mean, a bunch. We had a parish council meeting that I mentioned earlier that I went to this Saturday, we had bids for roofing of the church, and one roofer increased his bid by like $30,000 because of the tariffs. Another one increased by a little, almost close to $20,000. So it's, it's affecting the roofers, it's, you know, people that are in construction that have to pay for materials like that are going to be paying more money, and so they increase the cost to the consumer. So those are going up a bunch. So I think if, if the city has to do some kind of construction, remodeling the old state police building, those kinds of things, that's going to be affected, affect our budget also.
That's right.
And what about that airport construction that we're in?
We already have a quote, we're saying, we can't deviate from that, and if we do, no more than, what, 20%?
Well, federal aviation is, is good about bringing in the, the revenue sources that we need, and so they'll, you know, they make us match it, but possibly by 10% or 5%, but possibly we won't be able to do as much as we used to do before.
Thank you.
Councilor Casey, I have to throw this in. You didn't tell me about your idea. I'm sorry. I just had to.
I wasn't on the agenda like you are.
I didn't ask to be on the agenda, but just so it happened that way, okay?
Thank you.
I, I found out about the agenda, and I'm on the agenda. So anyway, here we go. I just had to throw that in. Okay, my question, though, is the construction industry ratio. I know that we can get them at Tax and Rev. Could you monitor that? Do they release those monthly or quarterly?
Monthly.
That's what I said.
When they do the distribution, our GRT distribution, that's when they're posted on there.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, question one, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, ladies. The next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items. Number one-
Where's the floor?
I'm sorry. I think, do you want us to read them?
Well, might get the deeply approved, and if they put one out, then we have to.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented, and request that they be read into the record proper.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, who's reading?
Counselor O'Middle?
Wait.
Yes.
Oh.
We can take the vote and read them and try.
Right. You and I gonna vote first, or take them both?
Nobody's voting anything, so let's vote.
We're voting on the consent, reading them into the record proper and taking them all at once.
We're gonna, are we gonna, okay. We should be voting one time. We should read them into the record and then vote. That's usually how we handle, okay, read them into the record.
Number one, approval of Department of Public Safety grant for Las Vegas Police Department's Street Crimes Unit for overtime confidential funds and undercover vehicle maintenance. Number two, approval to award RFP number 2019-02 to Animal Welfare Coalition of Northeastern New Mexico for animal services and shelter operations. Number three, approval of resolution number 18-37, abatement of nuisances located at 1309 Sixth Street. Number four, approval of resolution number 18-41, assuring the availability of matching funds for the plan and design, construction management, and construction of the municipal airport SRE building for the storage of the snow removal equipment as per FAA agreement. Total cost of the project is equal to $89,100. State match is equal to $81,000. City share is $8,100. And number five, approval of resolution number 1843, budget adjustment resolution. That concludes the consent agenda items.
Okay. Vote.
Counselor O'Middle?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uliari Jr.?
Yes.
Motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, the motion carries. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is business items. Number one is the approval, disapproval of resolution number 18-42, request to continue support of the Amtrak Southwest Chief Passenger Service through Las Vegas, New Mexico, and we have Ms. Virginia Marupa. Good evening, Ms. Marupa.
Good evening, Ms. Marupa. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
So basically, we're presenting again the resolution 18-42, which is the resolution to continue support with the Southwest Chief. I did make those changes the council had requested during the last meeting. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the three that I did include. The Southwest Chief is the utmost importance to the city of Las Vegas, as community members, business owners, homeowners, and city government are investing in the revitalization of the historic rural district. And whereas the Southwest Chief is important to the increase of historical tourism, as the city of Las Vegas consists of over 900 buildings on the National Historic Registry. And whereas the Southwest Chief serves as one of three forms of transportation in and out of Las Vegas.
Proceed, thank you. Questions, comments? What is the pleasure for?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 18-42, request to continue support of the Amtrak Southwest Chief Passenger Service through Las Vegas, New Mexico.
Do I have a second? Second. Will come?
Okay, Counselor O'Middle?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uliari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Howell, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the, for the reports. Counselor O'Middle.
Thank you, Virginia.
Ms. Gallegos, I just had a question. Tilden, have you received an update since August?
I have not received one. I know that last week we had talked to code enforcement and also to Virginia, and so if anything, he is checking on the landlord, the owner of the property. That's where we start, is the owner of the property, and then release a letter, and I can get that information for you, see if there's any update.
Okay, and then the other question, I've asked, and Counselor Howell asked last week, the debris again at the housing-
And I meant to ask housing, the housing staff, but I will ask the housing staff in the morning and see where we're at. I believe that it was housing property, and they were waiting for their new budget to try to clean out that area. That was the last I understood. So I, I will get that, I'll get an update for you in the morning.
And now my, my next question is a biggie, I guess you could say that. 60 days have passed, and the governing body rules of procedure, I know now, Madam Mayor, one of the issues was not having an attorney on staff, and now we do.
Yes, she's actually catching up on everything that-
And I know it seems like I'm throwing, you know, I keep throwing some stuff towards her, but, you know, just things that are affecting us, I think, as a governing body.
Take a note, make a note of that, and then when, with the opportunity, free time.
She's, she's actually prepared to address a little bit of those, the couple of issues that we had, the charter, and, and I'll just turn the floor to her.
Okay.
Mayor, council, councilors. There are a couple of issues, the city of Las Vegas governing body of rules of procedure and the municipal charter. It's my understanding that direction has been given to review them both. It's also my understanding that there's been some changes which weren't incorporated in the copies that we have. Additionally, there is a charter committee, which has not met in a very long time, and in reviewing some of the minutes from that meeting. My understanding that several board members have quit. So my intent is to send out letters to everyone that was on the committee, see if their intent is to remain on the committee or resign, and make sure that there are appointments and work towards meeting and getting this started.
And I'm not certain if they quit, or they just felt the charter committee dismantled. So I, yeah, thank you for following up with that. Gotta find out if they're showing.
And as far as the governing body, governing body rules of procedure, I'll just, you know, give my two cents, and maybe you could write this down. I think the, one of the biggest issues right now is, you know, council members getting items on the agenda. You know, my opinion, you know, it should only take two of us, even though it might not be a majority, but if a majority, let's say, you know, two members of this council request an item be placed on there, I think it should be. If, if the majority decides, you know, a different way than those two that requested it, it could always be voted down. So I, I think those are, you know, that's a change that I'd like to see.
Yeah, but we just recently adopted a resolution, and I would advise her to look at that resolution that was presented for the consensus, or I was, or direction, to check on that.
But, but Madam Mayor, and this, this goes back again, is that resolution can be changed also.
Yeah, we know that.
That, that's just a change that I'd like to see this governing body adopt, just, you know, so we have a voice right now. There are times that feel I don't have a voice. If I try to put in agenda, I can't, and I've done it a couple times. So that basically eliminates the voice of the people in my ward, and that's not fair. They elected me to represent them if I'm not allowed to represent them, because that's the way I feel. You know, I think, you know, two, two members should be able to, and if the majority feel, well, at least we tried.
It should be the majority.
The majority, that's when you prove the agenda. If the majority feel no, then it takes, gets taken off the agenda, but at least we place that item on the agenda. But if you could look into those and, I'm gonna request, I'm gonna, you know, put the documents in to, to put that item on the agenda, because I know it's already, you know, we're at 60 days, well, beyond 60 days, but I'm gonna try that again, and I'll continue trying. I'll, I'll move on to my next question, but thank you, Madam Attorney, Ms. Cardini. The last question I had, Ms. Gallegos, was the rec center. I know there was some items, there was some, some of the treadmills that were down, are those, I know Sonia's here, have those been?
Yes, we're, we're getting that processed. We sent it back, grocery company, and they're, they sent it back, and we have two that are working now, but one, another one went down, so we do have-
Are those the newer items that we just?
No, they're old ones. They're very old.
And then the other question, and I know, I guess this will go back to staffing, I know there was shortage in employees. The concern that I got, you know, directly was that there was nobody in the back at that time when they went, and they just felt it was a liability, you know, just making us aware, and I just wanna, you know, that's gonna be addressed?
Right, yes, that is being addressed, and I do have people alternating to those hours where we are sort of staff in this area. So we, I take a walk back there, I have everybody on it.
Okay, all right.
And we're in the middle of trying to hire, we did have a couple of issues that we needed to take care of last week, and so we're in the, she's in the middle of revealing the applications at this point, I believe, trying to bring people on as quickly as we can.
And then, last thing is just, if there's a personnel issues that, you know, I think, if I know what I wanna, I won't go into detail here, but if there's anything that comes up, just send us sort of like an update, so we're not caught by surprise by the community wondering.
Usually if there's personnel matters, we discuss them in a second.
I would not recommend, and neither would the attorney, that we put anything in writing regarding any personnel matter.
Well, then I'm not asking for detail, but just so we're not bombarded in the community that-
Well, okay. We can talk a little bit about it.
Now, I have a question. What is the name of your friend, the bodybuilder? Martinez, was his first name?
George, but he was-
Oh, George. Is it George Martinez?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he texted me, and I wanted to let you know, regarding some equipment, purchasing of some equipment, and I did tell the city manager to look into it, because apparently he had heard from a city councillor, I'm not sure who it was, that the equipment had been removed and was up for sale, and I was unaware of that, but I did check with Ms. Gallegos, and what happened to any of that equipment?
It's being stored actually in public facilities until we can, I'll put it up for sale, but it has to come first, Madam Mayor.
He said he was interested in it, purchase it. So just see. Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad the Counselor O'Middle brought up the governing body rules of procedure, because and our attorney is going to have to really review those, because it's a mishmash of everything in there. It's very poorly written. It has rules of ethic rules for council, for employees, all mixed in together. There's no separation of anything in there. It's really bad, and so I'm glad that she's looking at that, and I know that she'll come up with something much better than what we currently have on that. The other issue is Garfield Street. Ms. Gallegos, have you had the chance to address that? And I would appreciate if you would direct our attorney to take a look at the documents dealing with Garfield Street, so that if we need to unvacate that street so that it can be taken care of. I went to look at it recently, and it's in horrible, horrible, deplorable shape. There's no way you can get a car in there without breaking something. And so I think we really do need to address that, and it's gone on far too long. I first brought that to the council when I was elected two years ago, and we're still not getting anywhere on that. So I would like to see some kind of movement on, on that issue if we possibly can. And if we can unvacate the street, so that the city can work on it, then I would appreciate that we could maybe get it on the agenda for next month. And my last issue is, I know that the legislative session is going to be starting soon, and I know that last year we had a beautiful, wonderful reception at the LeFonda for Las Vegas night, and it was very lavish, and just Virginia did an awesome job. She did the table decorations herself, and, I mean, everything was just really nice. But we only had six legislators show up. And so I'm hoping that this year we can do something a little bit different, so that we can actually get the legislators there. And I know that it's difficult to get them there, because they have meetings at night, but this year is the long session, and so I'm hoping that we might be able to have our Las Vegas night, and I'm sure it's probably already scheduled. But we need to do something to get them there, because it doesn't do any good, the purpose of Las Vegas- The purpose of Las Vegas night is to get the legislators there so that we can lobby them on the needs of the city. And it, you know, it's nice that we have a party, but the purpose is to speak to the legislators and not just our own, but those from Albuquerque because they have the largest contingency of legislators, and without their vote, we don't get anything. And so, if you have an appropriations committee with Representative Salazar on there and everybody else is from Albuquerque and Las Cruces and Santa Fe, then they're gonna vote for their things, and if Las Vegas gets something, it's because Representative Salazar does a really good job. But we don't get a whole lot because of that. So, we need to, I think, focus, put a little bit more focus on the lobbying effort during our event, whatever that event is going to be. And hopefully, we'll be able to get more legislators there. I don't know if we need to make personal phone calls to them from community members or what it is that we need to do, but we need to do something to get them through.
If I may, I can give you an explanation on that. So, last year, when the legislature, the Senate legislature was scheduled, and of course, I came in after that had already been scheduled and stuff, but what I found out was that we were actually scheduled during the time that they were presenting the Hundred Bill. And so, that's why we didn't get a lot of the representatives and the legislators down at our party because they were celebrating something big and major there. So, this year, we have worked with the scheduling over in the roundhouse and with the legislators to make sure that we're not becoming a part of, or having ours during the time that they're having something big and major again. So, we have did that, and it actually turned out very well. This year, it will be scheduled February 28th, and it's gonna be actually during the higher education day. So, we do have Highlands at Luna, and we're looking to get, you know, United Road College and everybody else, but that's the reason is because when staff lost their schedule that they had scheduled it during something major.
When they have the Hundred Bill party, everybody goes to that.
Yeah.
And everything else is non-existent, so, yeah.
So, we were lucky we got the six we did, but this year, we won't have that problem.
That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to say is I want to thank our city staff. All the departments are just, I'm always so impressed because they're always so good. You know, Senior Center offers wonderful services for people. I've had phone calls from citizens. One little old lady called me last night. She's 83 and she's doing the Tai Chi, and she said, Barbara, I just don't have any balance, and this Tai Chi is really helping me. And so, you know, all of these things that we provide for our citizens, the services of the street department, the utilities, the rec center, transportation, everybody just does such an excellent job, and I'm so impressed with everybody and their willingness to do whatever it takes. And I just really appreciate everybody very much, and I want to thank them.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three things.
Yes, sir.
First, the property that is adjacent to the housing authority and on Collins Drive.
Yes, sir.
That has a lot of weeds. I spoke to the property owner, and he's getting a crew together.
San Francisco.
Pardon me?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I spoke to the property owner, and he's getting a crew together to get it cleaned up. So, he will get that done.
Thank you.
Pretty soon. Two, as I was leaving the, the meeting last night from the Presbyterian Church, it was around 8:30. I was driving up Eighth Street. I had to stop. And you know that my concern about skunks have been pretty aggressive in regards to for our community to take care of. So, I had to stop. And guess what was walking across the road?
A family.
And a family of skunks.
A family.
A family.
Oh, my God.
I mean, I thought that was fake news when I first said it, but then I, I actually saw that.
Wow.
And my goodness, you can imagine the residents on Eighth Street, they're going across the street and going into their backyards or in their garages and things like that. We need to do something. So, what I found out, that either USDA or Wildlife Refuge has some type of a grant of some sort for us to address that, that issue. And I would like to see, and if I can, maybe the governing body will, will go along with it, to invite either a representative from the USDA or Wildlife to come speak to us and really try to help us addressing this issue, because it's rampant throughout our community. So, I think that would be a really good thing.
I can certainly check to see if they could come in and do a presentation in front of mayor council. And I know that community development, the code enforcement is also working on some type of training and some other information that we can bring back. I believe that I needed to bring back that, bring that back to you in a couple of months, and so they've been working on that as well. But we can certainly check with USDA and the Wildlife Refuge and see if they would be willing to come in and, and do a presentation and possibly answer the questions that you may have.
That'll be great.
Possibly they might need grant monies for the people that can't afford. We'll look into that as well.
Or we can provide gas masks to all the people on Eighth Street.
It's not only Eighth Street.
I know. It's all over the place. Number three, I was looking forward to Ms. Davis to speak to us, to address us, and she's here now. She's on a long trip, but she wasn't able to do that. But we'll be looking forward to it, Ms. Davis, on the next time.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Howell. Counselor Uliwari?
Yes, I guess I had some concerns on the right ways on Salazar and Romero and Santana. The hounds and the weeds are very close to the, to the curving. Maybe you could have your public workers or somebody take a look at it.
Salazar, Santana, and Romero?
Romero and Santana.
Yes, sir.
The stop signs are, the hounds are, are going very, you can very see the stop signs on them.
Okay. We'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, could you, whose responsibility around the, the stop sign areas at the cities? I know if it's in front of a home, the sidewalk, it's the responsibility of the property owner, but the stop signs in that area, that corners?
The stop signs, we, I would believe that, I believe that we can clean them out, clean around them. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. I forgot. I had called you about, I don't know, a month ago or so regarding the stop sign that was requested by a constituent on the corner of Reynolds and 10th Street by the Highlands Campus.
Reynolds and 10th Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And he requested a stop signal just to fly to their, to their stop sign, stop the traffic going towards your town.
Is that how it helps?
It's, it's down the street by the Highlands Campus.
It has to be, yeah.
Okay, there's no stop sign there at all now? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's no stop sign there at all.
We need to do a traffic study, and that's what it costs, is about $2,000 or more to see, it has to qualify first.
Okay. We can take a look at it, and I'll have the staff look at, at public facilities.
See if there's any old traffic study reports within a three to five-year period. This way, the city doesn't have to spend that money.
And who is in charge of the lights on Mills Avenue? Is that?
I believe that's the state. Am I correct, that state?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The lighting is ours, all the lights are ours, so we are responsible.
Driving home from the meeting last week, I couldn't even see my street to turn off and so. I was afraid to turn into the Veterans Park or drive into the Robertson property because I, you can't see it. It's dark.
It's dark.
And they're working.
Yeah, so I would really appreciate a light there so I can get home. What I did was I drove all the way up to Lowe's and then turned there because I, you know, there was a light there, but otherwise, you know.
Is it over all for color?
I guess so, yeah.
Can you go out and check it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get him.
I appreciate that.
Yes, okay. Yes, ma'am.
I think it was Counselor Howell. I'll go back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I left, or during the meeting last night with concerns of the Samaritan House, Charlie from Spickens Fan had spoke up and said that, speaking of lighting, his alleyway and also around the corner from where the future Samaritan House is going to be, there needs to be light there because of the, you know, concerns that the neighbors have over there. And if we nip it in the butt now before the existence of Samaritan House there, then we could, you know, ease the concerns of the residents there. There needs to be some lighting, even, even near the park, what is it now? Lincoln Park.
They wanted lighting at Lincoln Park. They wanted lighting behind the alleyway, I believe, and then, I believe that's what it was.
Can we put lighting at the alleyways?
I'm not sure that we can or cannot, or we can, we can at least look into it. We can at least look at it and then have an answer for you.
Maybe put floodlights on top of the buildings.
Oh, yes, they wanted, they wanted paving on the alleyways as well.
We can put floodlights on the buildings. When people walk up, it goes like.
I don't know.
Well, we gotta address it.
Really?
We need to. Do something.
I don't know. Our previous city manager used to buy a lot of lights, a lot of Christmas lights, and I think the department wants to order even more lighting, so we may have some lighting anyway. We may have the lighting. We may also have some lighting, so we'll see.
Counselor Romelo?
Just, just one last thing. I want to thank Deputy Chief Jenkins for, you know, for stepping up. I know we had managed a situation where we pretty much assumed the responsibilities, but thank you for, for stepping up and, and, I mean, we have a lot of support from the community, but thank you, you know, unfortunate that whatever happened, happened, and you're in that role, but thank you for continuing, you know, all of you, you know, and the rest of the command staff that have, you know, kept, kept the PD, you know, in the standing that it is, and they haven't faltered, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Now, with regards to the direction of, of the Garfield Street vacate, we need to have full consensus from the governing body to proceed forward with that. Okay? So, I'd like to see if Counselor Romelo, do you agree and consent to that item? The Garfield?
Oh, yeah.
So, they can, okay. Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Tell me again what?
The Garfield property, they're looking at the vacate issue that we have there. So, we're going to see, we have to give direction to.
Garfield, tell me about the Garfield. I mean, I don't know where.
Okay. Garfield is off of Railroad.
Okay.
And there's, there's some issues there with the neighbors, and there's also some issues with cleaning and maintaining that property, because there's a small section of the Garfield property that does not fall within city limits. So, what we have to do, because it was vacated, Counselor Casey has asked if we would like to look into it, to look at the vacate issue.
Okay.
Revisit that. But we need full consensus to give that direction to the city attorney. Do you concur?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Uliwari?
Yes.
And I do too, as all governing body members should. No problem. If I would've said no, then that would've been different.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I agree with you. Okay. I think we're done at this point in time. All the Counselors' reports have been fulfilled. I gave mine initially. I don't believe we have need for executive session?
I don't believe so, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Romelo?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romelo, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam.